Yeah, people want things too quick. That's why they play out of their bankroll and they're entitled. They think, yeah, I'm not supposed to play them to ten dollar tournaments. I'm good enough for one hundred dollar tournaments. But the thing is, you're not the one that judges whether you're good enough. It's poker. It's in business, you would say it's the market that decides whether you're good enough or not. And once you don't have the results, you're not good enough. Nobody cares how good you are in reviews, how much you know about poker and theory. If you're not able to exploit your opponents, nobody gives a shit. You can argue, oh, I am actually so much better than this guy. Apparently not, he makes more money than you. Maybe he's doing something that you just have no clue about. So I'm really tired of all these messages, but Ben, like I studied that much and probably don't study efficient enough and I should be playing higher, I should be doing this. I should be gifted rewarded is like all these shirts. Turn them into musts that you must keep going and that you must keep studying and you you're not supposed to think like this. Like you're not the one that decides whether you're winning player. It's it's it sounds so trivial, but it's astonishing to me how little apply this tiny bit of shift in their mindset.
A lot of times people just wanna do quantity and be like, I went through ten hands, I went through twenty. Cause they think they need to do like their homework, like they'd say in school, but it doesn't matter how many reps you do if you don't get it. And if you can get it off one rep, then great, do more reps if you want to. But as long as you've got the main things to pay attention to. So in game you can look for those patterns and look for those variables. You're good because you're thinking about the game right at that.
Yeah.
Right?
I mean, it's the same with everything. Like you can read twenty books a week and just go through it and rush through it for the sake of reading books. Or you just take one book and you try to understand, you try to apply what is in there. Which tactics compared with each other are going to be more helpful for your life? Pretty sure just reading one book thoroughly, you will have learned more. Right? And because you won't remember so much if you just if you just rush it through for the sake of reading. Unless you have the ability to read really fast and pick up on things. But for most people, taking your time, trying to understand it is much better. Like also the gym, you know, when you do it with your biceps like this and you make like fifty reps. Or you just do it slow, you know, like slow and really getting into the muscle, into the fibers. Will grow your muscle much better. This is same for our new pathways in the brain that focusing on one spot and trying to understand it will stay for there much longer.
Yeah, like I had a big revelation when I went back to the gym recently. Cause I tried to work out like I was when I was bodybuilding. I thought, okay, I have my reps marked out and my routine marked out and I wanna hit the most weight. And you know, get through the numbers.
Yeah.
Right? And then when I went back and every time I'd go back to the gym, you know, my late twenties doing that, I'd just get worn out very quickly. Cause my body, that wasn't the way to train. And recently I learned, okay, it doesn't, my goal is not to do as many reps as possible. My goal is to activate as many fibers of the muscle as possible. And that means feeling into the rep and doing the reps like a lot of times really slowly. So that all the extra kind of recruits in the muscle can turn on. And my goal is to actually feel as much of the muscle as possible to get it turned on and functioning and getting blood flow going through there rather than just rushing to the end of the motion.
Yeah.
And I think you did a really good job with that with the master class. Cause like now that I'm back in school, I see the way they teach is great. They say, do the reading, now do the homework and then review and then do the test. And a lot of the, you know, training sites in the past were just here's all the videos, new videos every day. Watch the videos, just binge through the content will keep you entertained and stimulated. And you were like, no, fuck that. I don't wanna give people tons of content to just like drown them and confuse them in concepts. I wanna give them the right knowledge, some examples to show it and then some homework so they can apply it and get it.
Yeah.
And I think when people actually follow what you suggested and you even say like, don't binge it. Like if you haven't done the homework, don't do the next lesson. When they follow that approach, they're actually gonna get it and things are gonna click and they'll realize, oh, I don't have to watch, you know, five to ten hours of training videos or five to ten hours of content a week. Because once I watch an hour to two hours of a focused concept and then I go practice that on the table. All the learning I'm gonna do is from review of my own play and talking with friends. Cause I actually get it and I don't need someone to feed me new concepts along the way.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, go ahead.
You've seen it with the results of your students that it works, right? Like, like, yes, I screwed up on the final table here. Understandable when I didn't prepare for these spots going into the session, but I played three online tournaments all year, but what did I do? I watched your master class in full. I watched Unchained in full. I watched The Bounty Beast in the week leading up to this. So I had a better understanding of I C M. And from hearing that level of discussion and then just kinda watching poker go and stuff to see live hands and playing some reps live. My mind was in the right place that I was thinking about the game the right way. And I was able to, for the most part, stay calm through, you know, a multi-day twenty-hour grind. And playing for money that I don't usually play for these stakes. And I still, you know, stayed pretty calm through most of it.
Yeah. And I think that homework itself has a very bad reputation. Because from the way we see it in school, it's not very well designed and it has its flaws certainly. However, homework are a good thing if you give some freedom. I'm not saying do exactly this at this point in time for this amount. I'm more giving advice and if you don't understand it, you should be doing this homework. And then depending on the spots you struggle in, like reshoving, I'm not telling you, okay, analyze this deck size, this hand until tomorrow, because everyone rules differently. If you need two weeks, take two weeks. If you only need three days, do it within three days. It depends on how much time you have available on your skill level. And in school, it's like everyone has the same, everyone has different conditions, but everyone has the same task, which cannot work out. And then of course we get frustrated with homework because for certain things are super easy and it takes, we have so much time for it. And certain things are so difficult for us and we actually need more time, but we don't get it. And then of course, if we hear homework, it's something bad, but actually if you give, if you have some freedom within it. Very important thing though is to be very self-aware, not bullshit yourself and always think, oh, I actually understand, yeah, I get it. In order to skip the homework, that's not the right way. But then it actually can actually be quite pleasant because once you start seeing the results, once it starts making click and you give yourself a little bit of, yeah, time to also try, try out the homework in a different way. Then it can be quite pleasant, it's alright, right?
Yeah. And if someone has like that negative connotation in their mind where when they hear homework, they just shut down. Cause a lot of times that's the case. You hear the word and it's the trigger and you just shut down. I know like a lot of people who are in poker, like myself, you know, didn't really take school all that seriously at the end. And so they have a negative association with homework. But if you just change the wording from, I'm gonna do my homework to, or like, I need to do my homework to, I get to do an advanced learning practice. Now it's different because when we do the homework that you suggest, it's like an advanced learning opportunity. Where it's like, cool, you learn from the lesson. Do you want an advanced learning opportunity? Cause it's here if you wanna do it. And for some people who just have that negative thought about homework, if you just change the word, maybe that changes the attitude. And when you realize it's not about doing fifteen reps, but doing one really well, where once you get it, it's easy to do fifty more. It'd be easy to do five hundred more, cause you're like, oh, I get this now.
Yeah.
And when people understand like that approach and just realize like, hey, switch a word, see how you feel. Once you feel good about doing the review, then you're in the right state of mind, then you're in the right place. And then you're also gonna feel better when you play poker, right? Cause you're excited to apply what you learned and excited about the fact that you have this information advantage over the rest of the competition. When, you know, you're playing for big money, you don't punt twenty thousand dollars like I did, cause you prepared for that situation.
Yeah. And that's actually a good point that you brought up because I had a lot of talks with students and I received a lot of messages. Ah, Ben, I'm not so sure about the homework. Like, you know, they, they, they tell me they don't really know what to do, but I can sense they're just lazy. They just don't really wanna try. They've tried to find excuse to make it more complex. Dude, it's not that complex, just find ten hands about this spot. Apply this knowledge that you have learned in the course and draw conclusions. And actually the freedom that I'm giving them for the homework, they take it as not having enough guidance to try to avoid it. Because in school, someone is telling you exactly what to do, but that's not the right way. Because you come from a different skill level or certain amount of time that you have available. So this amount of freedom, they use a little bit to bullshit themselves in order to avoid the homework. But in fact, once they did it and they actually see what they learned in every hand, what they can do better, like, oh, Ben, now I'm pumped up. I wanna play, okay, I'm gonna play, I'm gonna play, like, thank you, it was so great, it really helps. And now I also understand how I can study my own spots. My goal is basically to make myself disappear or vanish, so they don't need me anymore. They know how to study the spots, they know how to find leaks to literally become their own coach.
Yeah, cause you wanna be able to go sit on the beach and just check your emails with saying, hey, Ben, thanks for the help. I just won ten K, I just won fifty K, I just won seventy-five K. And you're like, hey, life's good.
Yeah.
You look at it, you're like, life's really good.
That's the best reward you can get. And then I know I did my job right and I know I'm not perfect, that's why I'm constantly updating. Also try to improve my teaching technique to make things more concise and shorter. As you've seen in the term master class, we broke it more down into shorter concepts. Because I've realized, okay, this is actually more beneficial for the students and more pleasant to learn with. And constantly trying to improve and deliver the best possible value of course.
Yeah. And I think you guys did a great job with shortening it. Cause what I've learned from like teaching and from content creation is just gotta be able to get people in the door. And the same way people will shut off when they hear homework, they might shut off if they see like a ninety-minute video. Cause they think, oh, I can't, I can't get through ten minutes. But if you take the same video and you make it into ten, ninety-minute parts, they're more likely to go through it. Especially, you know, if you get a little check mark for each part you go through, they're like, oh, man, I can't wait to go through this. Cause now they're winning the game of completion. Whereas like the one ninety-minute thing seems so impossible, but that short task seems so easy.
Yeah.
Can I ask you one question about final tables? Because, you know, it's most of the time when people are grinding tournaments, they're gonna play, you know, mid-sized fields, probably, you know, hundred to eight hundred people. And they're kinda used to being in that situation. They're gonna get into the same situation, final two tables, final tables, pretty frequently if they play a high volume. But if they make a big run on a Sunday or they make a big run in their local live tournaments or, you know, like E P T or something. That's gonna be a rare situation that won't come along as often. And also the, in terms of percentages, the payouts are the same. But in terms of the amount of buy-ins they win with each jump, it's very different than in a small field tournament. And I'm just wondering if you adjust your strategy or suggest people adjust their strategy at all when the opportunity is more infrequent and the money's more meaningful relative to their bankroll? Or if you say, use the same strategy and, you know, use that thought process against your opponents?
You have to adjust your strategy because people play different, they play tighter, big blasts are gonna happen. That's totally natural. Most players don't play according to their bankroll. So you will have players that are a little bit more money scared, that play a little too passive, take that into consideration for every single spot. And as I said earlier, for me, it helps not looking at the page arms. For me, it helps to think about I C M equity in terms of real chips. So whenever I'm the big stack, I don't put too much pressure on myself. Whenever I am a short stack, I know my I C M equity is still quite a lot. Even though if I have ten big blinds, I know still with five big blinds, it's a lot. And yeah, I just always try to think about where does U A V come from? And the most, what most people are afraid of on final tables is they are in a situation where they're somewhat clueless, they don't really know how their opponent is going to approach this spot and it's in a big pot. And we can't avoid that. We can't, we can only reduce it by preparing ourselves as best as possible. That's why I say studying I C M spots is so important because it gives you more confidence. You will know or you will have a better understanding of every spot. There's still spots where you might be lost, happens to me as well, we can't avoid, it happens to everyone. So I see it more as a shared human experience that everyone is gonna be struggling. I know that someone else is going to be in the spot, yeah, okay, this time it's me, next time it's gonna be someone else. Deal with it. Review it and make it better. Like you had with your king eight, you didn't really know what to call, next time you know, happens, move on. And this is like a constant improve of your R I. It's, that's how it works. People are too emotional, people are too thinking about, oh, I might be potentially buying this present for my girlfriend. I might impress my friends if I reach this next page. And they already, they already visualize all the things they might be able to buy or getting out of debt with all that money. There's too much pressure. If you're thinking about I C M equity, shares, you don't get into that emotional fucked up situation of connecting or being too attached to the money.
Yeah. Yeah. And that way you actually stay present with the game and pick up on everything. While other people who start daydreaming are no longer connected with what's going on.
Exactly.
Like I saw it this summer in the hundred K or the fifty K at the World Series, whatever the biggest buy-in was. Where one of the players picked up the chip lead at one point and you could already see they were thinking about partying and thinking about how they were gonna celebrate. And just even for that thirty, forty-five seconds where they disconnected from the game and thought about that, it completely took them out of the zone. And I don't remember where they finished, but they didn't end up getting first. And it was just being there live, you could see, oh, that person is already like thinking beyond the sale, already assuming the win's there. And you can't go to that place until the job is done. You have to have all your resources ready for competition until like the final card is dealt.
Exactly.
Cool. And I think one other thing that I see you do really well, you know, just from like taking your programs and also going through social media is you do a lot of things to take yourself out of your comfort zone. And I find that when we do that, whether it's, you know, with exercise or social situations or work or, you know, whatever it is. Yeah, cold showers, psychedelics, anything that takes us out of our comfort zone, like way out of our comfort zone, makes it easier to handle poker situations. Cause you're like, oh, I get to play a game with some chips and yeah, there's some money involved. Well, I just got hit in the face for two hours, like doing Muay Thai, so like this is not a big deal.
Yeah.
And like what I see you doing, like pushing yourself way out of your comfort zone with that, makes it so much easier for you to be calm in these high-pressure situations because you're not feeling the pressure. This is in a big stressor to you relative to the level of stress that your nervous system can handle from all the other things.
Yeah, exactly. Whether it's cold showers, exercises, like sometimes I do very, very extreme exercises. My favorite one is death by burpees. If you don't know what it is, look it up, Google it. And you constantly remember your mindset that, wow, you're actually much tougher than these few bad beats. But if there's nothing that you really do outside of poker, then the punches that poker gives you in your face are much harder when you're actually getting punched out. Like I'm not saying go to the boxing club and get punched in the face, right? But I do some light sparring with my trainer. It's like, I know, he could beat me up in no second, like I wouldn't survive ten seconds. So he just spars with ten percent, I spar with hundred percent or also eighty percent. To be careful that I don't freak out. But it trains me that, yeah, I can take some punches, like you literally get punched in the face sometimes or the stomach. It's not that bad and sometimes it hurts. I couldn't spar now for two weeks because he hit me in the ribs, just like just a little jab and, you know, on the ribs, it's very painful. So I experienced the pain more outside of poker, so the pain in poker is not that bad. Because I need my energy for my workouts, for my cold shower, for my sparrings, for my meditations where it's very strenuous to endure, to survive, so to speak. And then if it's in poker, I'm like, really? I wanna, I wanna start complaining about that shit here, whereas I was just swearing for ten minutes in Iceland in some frozen lake? Oh, come on. It's not, that's how my mind then works, you know? And it happens to everyone. Once you start doing shit that really hurts and you don't need to every day, like fifty seconds in a cold shower. Man, that's, that's not a lot of time. It's not that this bullshit excuse, I don't have time for that, it doesn't count. You have time. Doing a ten-minute death by burpee challenge every day, you have time for that. Or even just, just three times a week. You know, doing some things that put you out of the comfort zone. And then the bad beats, they will feel so, 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 so little compared to what you actually do. You don't need to be the next David Goggins. You don't need to run an ultra marathon. There are little things that you can do every day or a couple of times a week that will, that will boost your mindset heavily. But people just don't wanna do it because it's hard and I understand. So it's much easier for us, for those who wanna do it and it gives us a huge edge.
Yeah. And like what you mentioned is amazing for physical stuff. And I also know that like going through emotional stuff is very powerful. You talk about it in Unchained, digging deep and actually doing the exercises with that. And anyone who's done like deep therapy or, you know, like deep yogic practice, deep life coaching knows. And if you haven't, I highly recommend it. When you go and reflect on your most painful emotional experiences in life and your most challenging experiences and you're able to make peace with them and take away the charge around those experiences, now a beat does not matter at all. Because what was getting triggered before from this bad beat that gets you emotionally aroused is something that was super painful from childhood when maybe that girl rejected you or your best friend screwed you over, someone robbed you, whatever. That's still there, but once those deeper ones have been processed and that like deep pain is gone, now the beat triggers nothing where you're like, right? Just another poker hand. And it's easy to take it. The other one I see where people get overly worked up is when they're playing outside their bankroll because they see it as more meaningful. And I think that's just something that people need to accept if they're gonna play tournaments. I think it's also what draws them to tournaments. They want the excitement of the big one in the high and just accept that that also comes with big disappointment and big pain until you get used to it and accept it as just the nature of the game, right?
Yeah. People want things too quick. That's why they play out of their bankroll and they're entitled. They think, yeah, I'm not supposed to play them to ten dollar tournaments, I'm good enough for one hundred dollar tournaments. But the thing is, you're not the one that judges whether you're good enough. It's poker. It's in business, you would say it's the market that decides whether you're good enough or not. And once you don't have the results, you're not good enough. Nobody cares how good you are in reviews, how much you know about poker and theory. If you're not able to exploit your opponents, nobody gives a shit. You can, you can, you can argue, oh, I am actually so much better than this guy. Apparently not, he makes more money than you. Maybe there's, he's doing something that you just have no clue about. So I'm really tired of all these messages, but Ben, like I studied that much and probably don't study efficient enough and I should be playing higher, I should be doing this. I should be gifted rewarded is like all these shirts. Turn them into musts that you must keep going and that you must keep studying and you you're not supposed to think like this. Like you're not the one that decides whether you're winning player. It's, it's, it sounds so trivial, but it's astonishing to me how little apply this tiny bit of shift in their mindset.
Yeah. Well, I mean, as long as people keep, I think when people continually crush and people ask, hey, what's that person doing? And those people kinda share the mindsets here and there. And as you've been so generous with your programs, people just actually listen and are willing to let go of some old beliefs and taking some new beliefs and let go of some old habits and taking some new habits. It may be tough at first because they don't know if the result's gonna come. And you know, they're like, oh, I don't know if it's gonna be worth it. But here's the thing, it might take a while to get the result, but once you get the result and you get the mastery, you can repeat it over and over and over again.
Yeah.
And that's the real beauty of putting in the effort is like, it's my favorite quote here is eat shit for a year, eat caviar for the rest of your life. Because once you figured out how to acquire and prepare and dine on caviar, you don't lose the ability to do that. And you can produce over and over and over again. And that's why the consistent effort and the study and the, you know, putting your mistakes on public display to learn from, it's worth it in the end. Cause yeah, pain is temporary, but execution, greatness, rewards, those are forever.
Yeah. Yeah, making yourself vulnerable, that's a good point. It's people start poker tomorrow and they play their first hands. And they think they have nothing to contribute, they're afraid of sharing their hands and mistakes. But the point is, since so little, little people actually start, you have already millions that you could inspire. People that might look up, hey, oh, wow, you started, wow, how did you do that? What do I need to consider? So you actually are already potentially a teacher or someone that you could inspire others to follow you because you started. You might not, of course, you don't have the experience it. That's why I encourage everyone in our Discord channels, even though if you started yesterday, there's always something that you can share about the hand. You always have a little bit of knowledge that you can share when posting it. I don't wanna hear anyone posting a hand and just asking, hey, how would you play? We always delete it and we always tell them, hey, share your thoughts relentlessly. I don't care if you started today, if it's your very first hand, there's always something you can say about the hand that you were thinking in this very hand. The problem is, most people are afraid to share their thought process because they make themselves naked. And I know that. It's not that they don't know, it's they're afraid of being judged. And this doesn't, this is something I don't expect, except. So in order to grow, I know it's a necessity to be able to make yourself vulnerable. So you better learn it today, so you better accept it today. Rather than wasting more weeks and months of trying to hide your flaws until someone detects them. Because once you start sharing a thought process, because the results might be good, you might have played the hand fine, but for the wrong reasons. And if you don't detect that, you're not gonna make it better next time. And you start, you keep misplaying more and more hands. So this ability of making yourself vulnerable is so key. And yes, I know, I don't, believe me, I've received so many messages, oh, what, like sharing my thoughts, what do you think? Like, but I wanna post the hand like this, do you think you're better than me or blah, blah, blah? It's like, alright, but you will see in a few months that I was right. There's no way around. Because in poker, it's more about the process of thinking to get to a result than the result itself. Because especially beginners think two results orientated. I would say ninety-five percent of the hands I posted are hands that are being lost, which makes no sense. Like this ratio is completely out of line. This already proves the point that people think two results oriented and not actually about how to get there. Like every single time someone posts a hand where he won and he asked a question, I like, dude, so much respect that you also analyze hands that you have won. Most people don't.
Yeah.
And most of the points they lost are just no brainers, they just flips they lost and then they get all confused and attached too much to the losing and not actually whether it was a profitable investment or not. Nobody, nobody, nobody posts, like, I can't really think of, if I just think back last weeks and I always check Discord. I analyze two, three hands a day for our students and even, even in the public channels. Where someone was posting a hand, there was a cooler and he won. Doesn't happen.
Yeah.
But if it's a cooler and they lost, they get all freaked out. They know it's a cooler, but they just, they just wanted the confirmation. It's not bad, it's, I'm not saying it's bad, but why doesn't it happen when people win hands? To check whether their thought process was right? Because they don't think like this, they don't think about the thought process, they think about the result. And so something is wrong here.
Yeah. So that kinda ties it together that when posting hands, don't post the hands that were the most painful or made you feel the best. But post the hands that were the most confusing or where you, or where you feel like you really made a ton of good decisions. Because other people can learn from those decisions and you might even find a better decision by sharing that. So yeah, drop, drop the emotions for reviews and get into the mind. And that's why I think taking a little time between playing and posting is good. Cause at the end of a session, we can be pretty emotionally up in it from all the financial swings. But after an hour to cool off, we can get in the right state of mind.
I mean, so many people always say, hey, you know, I wanna help people, I wanna, I wanna inspire people. But in order to do so, so many people will come to life coaches, poker coaches, whatever. It's like the new age, most favorite profession people wanna turn into. But you've gotta understand that if you start today, the flaw, even though you have a lot of flaws. Let's take our Discord as example. You started to play poker, you post your hand and you, you say that you're not experienced yet and you misplayed the hand completely. But this is how I thought, this is how I approached. How many people do you think you're gonna inspire that actually always just reading, but never posting because they are too shy? They see, oh, someone else is being able to show their flaws? Fuck, I can't behind, I can't hide behind it anymore. This is just a random dude, he's not a superstar, he's not a god-like human being. Fuck, if he's capable of doing it, then they start also dropping their ego. So in this moment of you being able to let go of you and your flaws, you start inspiring, let's say your Discord has sixteen thousand members. You only start inspiring hundreds, if not even thousands of others that haven't shared a hand yet. This is how you become someone that can inspire people, help people by showing your flaws and your mistakes. Fuck these guys that gonna blame you for misplaying the hands, that's not the ones you wanna inspire. These are just trolls, we don't care about them. Even if it's thousands, if you inspire two people, you can save the world. And that's how you become someone that can start inspiring people by true genius, opening up, showing yourself vulnerable. Because then others will catch up on that and start dropping their bullshit excuses about not being good enough. Because this doesn't count. Right? So it's always a matter of perspective. You start today or you start tomorrow and you start sharing your journey, you can already inspire millions.
Yeah.
And most people don't even start because then you start inspiring those people that don't, haven't started yet.
Yeah. That's so, it's so, it's so, it's so powerful what you just said. Cause people might not post or share because they don't want people to see them as that person who's the newbie.
Yeah.
But it's the person who's willing to put themselves out there that will excel so much faster than everyone else. And like, people will message me and say, how did Ally get so good? You know, Ally's crushing the super high rollers and high rollers. And I said, because he talked to every single person he could and learned from every single person he could and took every course and got feedback from everyone and didn't care what anyone said, cause he just wanted to learn so bad. And that's the guy that, you know, a year and a half ago, I told people, watch for this kid and they're like, who? Who? And it's, and then he was there because he had the right attitude and the right work ethic. And anyone who just wants to learn no matter what and will make all the mistakes and just keep pushing. And anyone who just wants to learn no matter what, and will make all the mistakes, and just keep pushing through and is cool with it, they will excel very quickly, and no one down the road, no one remembers them as the person who was a newbie. They just see them as who they are now, so there's no need to be afraid of being that newbie or that beginner. Put yourself out there, and the only thing people are gonna remember anyway, who are outsiders, is who you became. And the people who are insiders in your circle will remember you as the person who is open, honest, and helpful. So you'll be attracting all the best people around you for your crew to support you along the way. And then for the onlookers, they'll just see the finished product and, and wonder how you did it.
Yeah, hundred percent.
So that's cool, Ben, man, thanks for that, uh, I feel like you, you unlocked the final door that was still chained. Because I did the course, but I'm like, there's something that isn't quite there, you delivering now, I'm like, right.
I like keeping it practical, with examples, with real stuff, I don't like, you know, oh, you know, you gotta, can I just do what you love, and everything will fall into place, it's like, what does it mean?
Yeah.
That's the hardest part, and I also struggle with that a lot, but I try forcing myself, oh, okay, what can I do in practice? What can I tell people what, how it works in practice, uh, that they also can implement? That's, that's really difficult, and this is where for me, true teaching comes from.
Yeah, yeah, um, let me ask you one more thing before you go, because I gotta, I gotta go soon too. Who were, outside of poker, who were your two or three best mentors? Be they, you knew them in real life, or you read their books, who are the people who you really just love their teachings?
Uh, Ekatholi, uh, I think, when I left the Brighton back then, this was for sure, like four or five years ago, the, the biggest shift in my understanding, I was so much attached to everything that is outside, friends, material stuff, and then I started realizing, okay, there's more than that. So that was for sure a big inspiration, um, they're, they're a lot, like, they're a lot, the coaches, mentors I worked with, some spontaneously, some, some football players, there's a German football manager called Matthias Sommer, who, he's just well-known as, he's very polarizing, but he's just well-known as, also, similar to Oliver Kahn, I don't know, maybe you know Oliver Kahn, like, the, uh, he's, he, he is basically the best German goalkeeper we ever had. And called as, he had the nickname the Titan.
Okay.
Always, like, especially for poker, a very inspiring mindset, that I wouldn't say I tried to copy, but I tried to mirror in a certain way. Never, you know, getting, he could be getting emotional, but never emotional in a way that fucked up his performance. And like, I think he kept pushing himself by, you know, getting sometimes angry about his own team, team players, about, uh, the enemy, and, yeah, just this hard-working mindset, his work ethics, never giving up, always going this extra mile. Same for Matthias Sommer, who, and, and wherever he was, always successful. I wouldn't say, whenever I listened to his interview, that he knew everything, that he was perfect in strategy and stuff, but he just had this winning mentality, no excuses allowed. Still, very, appeared to me a very friendly guy, very understanding guy, but there were no room for excuses. And this really inspired me, also a lot of injuries in his career, always getting up again, trying one more time. And, um, I think he, he also, yeah, he won a lot of titles with, with, with different teams, as player and as trainer, as a coach. Yeah, these, these were personalities I was looking at. Also, my circle of friends, I had, I had people, poker players that struggled a lot, always running under EV, kept pushing, kept trying, never giving up. So, and at some point, I realized I need to have the circus, so I constantly tried to look for, for, um, bringing these people into my life, not by, um, you know, teaching value, always trying to, um, get something from them, but just, I try to offer as much as I can, and then see who comes, because I believe then the right people will come into my life that I can learn from.
Yeah, yeah, when you, when you bring people up and make them better, um, I mean psychologically, reciprocity, they, they feel obligated to do the same, but it's not even about that.
Yeah.
You know, if you're giving to someone and helping them be better, just when you're hanging around them, you're now hanging around a better person. So it's, it's win-win for you anyway, even if nothing comes back.
Yeah, exactly, just by them applying this mentality of, of trying to become better and growing, this will also inspire you to keep pushing, keep going, and, uh, not becoming lazy. Show me your five friends and I'll show you your future, I don't know who would say it, but it's,
Yeah.
Nothing more to say about that.
Yeah, good one to maybe do, just do a monthly reflection on. Who are you currently spending the most time with, your five people, and just, if, if they're in alignment with the, the dream you want, then that's your dream team, and it's all good. And if not, maybe just trade one in, trade one out, don't need to do extreme changes, but that's, yeah, that's a really good check-in. Really good, cool. Well, Ben, thanks for, I mean,
Maybe, maybe last advice that just came to my mind for, for, for the friends, like, when you wanna set a goal, write down who are the friends right now in the life that support you in that journey, like, what do you want in life? Don't try just to find friends for the sake of having friends, find out what you want in life, and then based on that, find the right people that match that journey. And it will be so much easier to find, uh, to, to actually accomplish your goals. So that's why I started Discord in the first place, because I know in order to become successful in poker, you need to have some people around you that can give you feedback, that can kick your ass, that know what it means to be in a downswing. She tell your mom, mom, I'm a downswinger, she's like, what? Does, what, does it have something to do with laundry? So like, right, doesn't work out, so you need to have the right people in your life. Period, and it sounds very selfish, but you can only provide value when you're happy to begin with. If you're miserable, how can you spread positivity, happiness, and love to other people? So you actually gotta be selfish as fuck, you have to think about for yourself, what do you want in life? And then bring the right people onto this journey on board.
And then it'll be a lot more fun, because let's be honest.
Hundred percent.
It's just like, it's, it's not fun doing things alone for much more than like a few hours.
That's true.
It's good to have people around, so. And I appreciate you doing this review with me and kinda being one of those people today, man, and, and guiding me a lot in this last year. I felt like, you know, I've been playing a decade, I have a good understanding of the game, and I've had some results, but I felt like, once I listened to your way, the German way, and just the structured way, things clicked in a way they didn't before, and my confidence level was higher than it's ever been, so I wanna thank you for helping me get the results I did this year, and for the results that are to come, because I know the training I did with you, uh, with the courses and here today are gonna be a large part of that future and those results, so thanks, thanks a lot, Ben.
Thank you for, for having me and for joining me here today, and, uh, we, we're gonna do that in the future for sure again, so looking forward. And for anyone that has questions, feedback, drop it in the comments, and then have a good, have a good weekend.
Yes.
Bye-bye.
Sweet.